It's great to see a room full of people. This is awesome and we are particularly honored to have the Vice Chair of our County Commission, Ms. Melissa Hughes. It's always an honor to have you with us. Good to see you. Tonight, we have something very special. And it's something that is exciting, but it's something that's sad at the same time. One of the things I've found since I've been on the Council is when you all work together and you get to know each other and you see each other every day and you come and go and you cross paths and sometimes you work on things that are good and fun, sometimes they're challenging and frustrating, but at the end of the day, you all become like family. And we are one big city of Tifton family. Some we love more than others, right? I'm teasing, I'm teasing. I like to pick on Jack. Can't have fun, it's not worth doing. But tonight, we want to acknowledge one of our family members. And when I found out how long this family member had been at the City of Tifton, I was a little bit shocked because she's always been at the City of Tifton. From the time I can remember my first encounter, unfortunately, it wasn't in her department, so I didn't get a speeding ticket, but the first time that I remember meeting her was years ago and she's just always sort of been here. And she's a part of the fabric of this community and she is going to be retiring and we're going to miss her greatly. And so, we want to honor her tonight and do some special things for her this evening. So I'm going to come down front and I have a nice little gift here. Hey, Mr. Grant. And... I would like... Did you just roll your eyes? If you don't know Teen, you don't know Teen. We have a proclamation here, Teen, that we would like to give to you to recognize you tonight for all of your years of service. Almost four decades. That is amazing. I feel a little bit like Paris Hilton. They just flash it. Our Lord. Alright. Our proclamation recognizes Foresting Crockett, 39 years of service and celebrated her retirement. Whereas Foresting Crockett began her career with the City of Tifton in October 1977 as a dispatcher with the Tifton Police Department. You remember that? 1977. Whereas since that time, she has remained a dedicated and that should be underlined and valuable and that should be underlined. We'll get emotional, Teen. Employees served the citizens of our community through the Tifton Police Department and the municipal court. And whereas Foresting... Sorry, I said Foresting, I lost the question. Currently serves as Deputy Court Clerk and has done so since April 1997. She has faithfully fulfilled her duties as clerk, helped to establish best practices and professionally represented the department. And whereas Foresting must be commended for her professionalism and her dedicated service to the City of Tifton. And whereas Foresting will long be remembered by her friends and coworkers for her faithful commitment to God, her care and heart and the joy she brings to our lives every day. And now therefore, it will be resolved that the City Council of the City of Tifton celebrate Foresting Crockett's 39 years of service with the City of Tifton and wish her the very best on her retirement. It's August 23rd, May 2016. Thank you. I'd like to call on Beth Sackler to come up here, there's something else to happen.
Wherefore, Teen, you gotta worry about me, Coach.
We're not really doing this one. Gail?
Okay, we have you a little song. "A Retirement Blessing." And I cannot sing it. At retirement blessing, you started on this journey so many years ago and now it's time to leave, to leave behind your friends you've come to know. You sought divine direction and heart to do his will. Your work became your passion as you used your gifts and skills. You set the highest standards for yourself and others showing honor, pride and dignity. They saw the best in you and rates to reach the story need not be your bottom line. The priceless things we gained in life often come from that divine. So don't waste not one more minute wishing things that might have been rather. Watch the seeds you planted grow and feel his peace within. I pray God keeps you safe and well wherever you may turn, surrounded by your loved ones, living out the dreams you've earned and in the quiet of your heart. You hear God's ultimate say, "My good and faithful servant, I'm so proud of you this day." So me and Teen have worked together for the whole 39 years. And we started off at the Police Department and I was clerk, but we were in the same office. And then I went to another building, we went to a... Left the jail, went to the Old City Hall. We were still in the same office. So there was a couple of the years that I was here and she was at the Police Department, but that didn't last long when we were back together. So for at least the last 17 years, we've sat in a little about 12 by 12 square office together, just the two of us. We've had our ups and downs, we've had our fights, we've screamed and hollered, we've cried, we've shared family together, we've shared friends. And it's my coworker, my best friend and my sister. And she will be forever and I will forever miss her. And I don't know what I'm gonna do without her because really, my brain, half of it doesn't work without her. She never forgets anything, so she's gonna get a lot of phone calls where I can say, "Teen, do you remember this guy called, he said that he got a ticket in 2014?" And she's gonna go, "Well, what's his address?" I'm gonna tell her and then she's gonna say, "Yeah, remember, he called back in 2014 and said he was selling his money and we still don't have it." So she's gonna have to be around a lot. And we're gonna miss her and we're very proud that she gets to do this, spend time with her family and do all the things that she's gonna enjoy doing. And come up and get us to go to lunch. And she said that she will cook breakfast every morning. And we can go by there at lunch and eat, so. Thank you, Teen.
Thanks, everyone. And...
Y'all didn't know she doubles as a relationship counselor.
For you, Mr. Brennan, that's no surprise.
She's gonna have a real sofa, you can go my own.
Thanks, everyone.
Let's give her one more round. You got it? Okay. Well, Teen, we wish you nothing but the absolute best and like I said, you are family and we are so proud of you. And the City of Tifton would not be what it is today without your story that was such a part of it. So thank you so very much and just enjoy your retirement.
And I will miss my family.
I know you will. Poor Beth is gonna be just a puddle tomorrow. I can't imagine when you're actually gone, what she's gonna do. So you've been put on notice, only half of her brain works, so you're gonna have to find her somewhere.
Beth, I'll just call your daddy and make sure.
We'll let Mr. JH take care of her. No, but thank you, Teen. We really, we really are thankful for you. At this point in time, we'll call our meeting to order and we do have agendas at the back of the room if anybody would like to grab one and follow along with us. Just give them a minute. No, I'm about to maybe come. I couldn't get it. I just pulled back. Yeah.
You had any troubles?
No, I've got many. I mean, I've got... Okay. Item number one involves the GFA grant funding for the solar energy project at the wastewater treatment plant. Mr. Larry Ryan.
Y'all may recall, so months ago, we were approached by a company called Renovations to put in a 1 megawatt solar power generation facility at the wastewater treatment plant. We have since met with them and I've had my two budget analysts and financial consultants review their documentation. And the original plan they came out with, it looks pretty good if you have a 3% increase in energy costs every year for about 15 years. Unfortunately, or unfortunately for us, the copper EMC, which provides service to that facility, they've only had one rate increase in the past 17 years. So when you throw that model in there, it just throws the numbers all out of there. So we're recommending that we don't pursue that at this time. Wes, Jack, anything?
Not you.
Okay, good then. That's the...
Okay. Johnny, have you... Anybody, y'all have any questions or comments or anything?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, now we can keep going to Clarence Surplus property.
We have an alley that we talked about here, a couple meetings ago, between Cypress Street and Bumper Street off of Bellevue. It's in your packets. Staff recommendation is to put it back on tax return. Put it to the adjacent property owners for purchase.
Okay.
That will be on the incentive agenda for the council meeting unless there's any discussion about that.
Okay. Any questions on that, guys?
No.
Johnny, you good on that?
Okay.
Okay, and then the next alley?
It's an unnamed alley between Seventh Street and Eleventh Street off of Timmins and Magnolia. We've met with the property owners out there on several different occasions. We've actually met with Mr. Bob King down at Carquest. We have came up with a solution to surplus in the alley, we believe. So staff recommendation is going to be to surplus the alley, to surplus the alley and they want to offer it to the property owners. However, only, we'll have to leave part of the alley open for access off of 82 into the Carquest parking lot. That's where the car carrier comes through. There's also a house that's on that alley that the access to that property is from the alley, so we can block it off, but only up to a point. The other property owners, or Mr. King in particular, has expressed interest in purchasing all or part of this part of the alley.
Okay.
And we looked at approaching off of Timmins and you'd have to get through the other person's carport to get to that one house and service off that one, but we do recommend surplus in that property.
So you're talking about leaving the west end open, basically?
That's right.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Could you do an easement instead of leaving it open?
We'll have a utility easement in there, but the intent is to block it off so we can take care of some other issues that are going on in that property.
Are you gonna move the fire hydrant that's on the east side, the one there that's right next to the fence?
We're gonna have, we will, if we have to move that one, we will. If we can gain access without having to relocate it, we can do that also. So we have a lot of options out there.
Okay. I know one of the property owners is here. Mr. Lee, did you have any questions or comments on that? Does that make sense as far as what your plans were?
No, like I said before, to various council members and to you there and to Mr. Ryan, you know, I'd work with you. And what do we have to do to keep, of course, the hydrant is very important, fire protection and...
You're right behind that pole. There you go.
But I do work with the city anywhere we can to make, you know, to grant an easement for those utilities that are there.
Okay.
And grant access to anything.
Perfect. The exciting thing is it's gonna allow your business to expand and grow.
It will. It allows us to expand and get bigger and to also have more employees.
Perfect.
That's what we're at.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay, Larry, do you want to go ahead and talk about the Community Development Block Grant Redevelopment Fund?
Yes. This is a property on Commerce Play that we've been discussing. We do have an MOU now between the City of Tifton and the Development Authority. If y'all authorize execution of that MOU, we'll proceed with that and then we'll get the letters to Mr. Robertson and then we can, that's the last step in applying for that grant to rebuild that property of Commerce Play.
Okay. So you want to have any questions or comments, thoughts on that? Everybody good? Okay. Our next item is the Resolution Authorizing City Manager to Execute an Agreement for Funding from the EPD Hazardous Waste Trust Fund. Ricky Hobbie.
This is a continuation of a resolution we had back in October of last year. The EPD was reimbursing us $111,520. In their first round, they paid out $75,000 and some change. And then this is the balance of that $111,000 to be for us to accept back into solid waste fund.
Okay. Any questions, comments on that?
And that's going to the post-closure account.
Yes, sir. It may be some discussion on that because there are some issues with our site that we may have to address. So we'll bring that back before you if that comes out.
It won't go in the press coverage camera this time. I'm just going to the phone.
She goes into the phone.
Okay. Any other questions?
Because we are at, our testing, people did find some issues and they're requesting some wells to be replaced. And that's what this money is actually for.
Okay.
Is to, you know, replace the wells, whatever needed around that hazard site.
Okay. And I'm sure in the presentation at the next meeting, we'll have cost and how this offsets and that kind of details.
I'm getting it together now.
Because it says financial implications, it is gonna be deposited in the closure, post-closure account.
That's right.
So that's not...
What's right there.
Yeah, that's where I got that from.
Okay. Any other questions, Ricky? You good, Johnny? Thank you. Okay. Our next item is the Ordinance Committing the Requirement for Adult Establishments, Entertainment Establishments. Rob Wilma.
Council, we had adopted an adult entertainment ordinance some four or five years ago now. And one of the things that was kind of left out under the heading of what an adult entertainment establishment is, was adult novelty shops. So this ordinance basically includes adult novelty shops as an entertainment establishment, thereby regulated by the Adult Entertainment Statute. I also put a section here where minors would not be admitted to a regulated shop. And also that, you know, if you look at the definition, there's certain parameters in which you would have to meet in order to be a novelty shop. If somebody doesn't meet that definition of a novelty shop, then if they do want to sell some type of adult novelties, it would have to be displayed in an area where minors would not be permitted. So that's the long and short of that.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Glad that was done properly.
Do a lot of research on that ordinance, by the way.
Those are those private one-on-one calls for the City of Tifton. All right. The next item, I don't know if we'll be able to discuss because part of this was something I was supposed to provide for you, Rob, and I have not, is the Ordinance Providing for Alcohol Sales at Festivals.
Right. Basically, Julie, you had asked me to take a look at this some months back, I think right at the first of the year. And basically, I fashioned this somewhat after what Savannah does as far as their festival ordinance. And basically, what the idea is, is that the City Council would determine whether or not there's a particular event that you want to categorize as a festival. And basically, that would be utilized in public streets, public parks, whatever you determine. Once you decide that you want to have a festival, then there would be, within that area, you define the festival area, and also within that festival area, and it could be the whole area, would be what they call a control zone. And within that control zone, you basically control who can be admitted to it or you control, you know, who can be handling or holding alcoholic beverages within the control zone. Basically, what the idea is, is that you would have wristbands and colored cups, basically to go with whatever festival you're gonna have. It might be red for Christmas or green for St. Patrick's Day or whatever. But the idea then is, is that if you have an establishment within the control zone that serves alcoholic beverages or licensed to do so, then it's very similar what they do in Macon. You know, when you leave the premises, if you want to leave the premises with an alcoholic drink, you would purchase your wristband and get your cup there at that location. And you also can have your food caterers, you are also licensed to sell alcohol, they can be actually set up within the control zone. And again, the wristbands would be purchased from that vendor within that control zone. What they have done in Savannah, and I believe in Macon as well, is that generally, these are conducted by a nonprofit organization. They pretty much managing and put together the festival. We were looking at having the Tifton Tourism Association be our nonprofit for the purposes of conducting and managing the festival. If the Tifton Tourism Association does manage and conduct the festival, what they would do then is that they would collect the monies that will, you know, from the wristbands. And then after the money has been collected within, I believe it's 30 days, maybe 60 days, I can't remember what I have in here, then the Tifton Tourism Association would make a report to the city as far as the monies that were made, account for all the wristbands, and then whatever agreed amount of monies would, could be then paid over to the city for, basically, this is kind of defer the cost to the city of putting on these type of festivals. So that's kind of it in a nutshell. As I said, this is, this is really almost Savannah's, you know, ordinance except with a few tweaks here and there and very similar to what Macon does where they have, I think they call them fabulous Fridays or something like that. So that's where we are.
There are a couple of applications that this could be used for if we choose to pass this. One is the Rhythm and Ribs Festival and then the other would be our downtown street parties called Rock Block. And it's really just a way, like Rob said, to recoup some of the expense because when you have these type of events, you need extra security, you have to, you know, there's just a lot that goes into it. You have to have the streets swept and garbage cans emptied, all the things that happen. So we do want to get the blessing before we move forward of the Tyron's Spiritman and his group, who are the tourism coordinators for the Tifton-Tipton County Tourism Association. And so we've asked them to review the ordinance as it's been submitted and I'm waiting to hear back on that. So also, the Outreach Marketing Group, which is a division of the Tourism Association, which does most of the City of Tifton events, we also want to kind of get their eyes on it to get their input. So if there's anything that y'all would like to amend or change or whatever with this, now's the time while we're, you know, kind of looking at all of this.
How is this zone determined?
You would determine it.
Yeah. The way that I see it happening is the group that's hosting the festival, let's say Rhythm and Ribs, that would be Outreach Marketing Group, comes to the council and says, "Here's the map of Fullwood Park, here's the area, that's the, sort of the adult zone where adult beverages would be sold. Generally, it's gonna be that area right around the stage." We do currently have signage and things like that that are in the park saying, "Please don't take your alcohol over here, keep your alcohol over here." But, you know, that sort of works to an extent, but, yeah, whoever's hosting the festival would come to us to approve the festival outline or the event outline.
And the way I envision it, Jack, is that you could have the Rhythm and Ribs Festival, the whole park naturally would be the festival area. And then, of course, then you'd have a designated control zone, which would be smaller than that. And then what they've done, you know, they post signs. Actually, what Savannah does is they, they have a map that they, you know, that's available and then they, on that map shows you the location that you can purchase your wristbands. But then if you're gonna have a block party, then perhaps the whole festival area is that block.
Yeah, it would be probably first screen.
And then the whole area, the whole festival area really is your control zone.
I mean, I just envision the park, maybe the zone being too small. I don't know, park up to it, but that's just me. But, I mean, you have smoking areas where everybody's crammed into one little spot trying to smoke and I can see everybody being crammed into one little... If you're gonna allow alcohol, then allow alcohol. You know, let's don't, yeah, that don't...
And that would be up to us to determine what that space is.
So I guess, you know, because I don't want it to affect participation as well. You know, if you have a lot of restrictions, you know, my biggest concern was, and I sent an email to council, just kind of saying, saying that, you know, when somebody has a drink and they want to go out and they want to, you know, get something to eat or whatever at one of the vendors, they're able to do that without being, "Oh, I gotta finish my beverage before I can go up here and get some barbecue." Now, I agree, now, we do need to have like the zone, the festival zone, but do allow... I guess, I guess my question is this, let me rephrase, is the control zone is the only area that you can purchase alcohol?
No, actually, I mean, let's take Rhythm and Ribs, that's probably a good example.
Right.
I mean, you could have, you know, you can have a, if you wanted to have a controlled zone within the park, you can do that. But really, the other part, the real operative portion of the ordinance is the wristbands. Because if you have, you know, what you're doing, if you want to purchase alcohol, the ordinance is just saying, "Okay, if you want to have alcohol, then you're gonna have to have a wristband." And so then, you know, you can go wherever you want to in the park. So this, the ordinance would just, you don't necessarily, I mean, you can establish control zone, you could have the whole festival area as a control zone, but the only thing you're controlling is the requirement of having a wristband. You don't be, have to be keeping people in and out.
Right.
It's very flexible as far as how you want to determine what the festival area is, where you want to have some type of control zone.
And the wristband cost would be about $5. It's not a, it's not a big fee. So it's just, it's to help, but there are, it does bring the opportunity to collect quite a bit of income. You know, and there would be some dispersment to the festival organizers as, you know, offset the cost of the festival and then over to the city as well. What that split is, is ours to determine, I guess, is that's right.
That's right, exactly.
So let's say Rhythm and, let's say Outreach Marketing Group keeps 50% of the wristband sales and the City of Tifton gets the other 50% or 60, 40, whatever we want. And the way that particular festival is set up, that group is, and being on that group, I can speak to that, that group's very conscious about where we have, we limit our alcohol vendors and then we, how we place the food vendors around and throughout that because the main event's actually happening at the stage, the Sid Blatmar stage. So that sort of is the area of the, you know, where everything's sort of clustered as far as food and alcohol sales and all, so.
We just don't want to be too restrictive.
No, we don't, we don't want it to be restricted.
So Outreach Marketing Group, they're funded by Hotel Motel, right?
Yes.
And which is, you know, what we want to do is make, make people come to Tifton.
Oh, sure.
All right. Like last Rhythm and Ribs, I have one beer, it cost me $3. Now that one beer that's gonna cost me $3 is gonna cost me $8. I mean, I would say, whatever the funding gap needs to be done, let's do it in the budget and allow them to cover their costs so we don't have to charge that $5, you know. And then responsibility of making sure that the individual is of age to drink alcohol should be on the vendor.
It remains on the vendor according to the ordinance. Just because you have a wristband does not necessarily, does not mean that the law, that the vendor should still be checking IDs.
Sure.
Well, we may, and we may decide not to approve it.
Right.
That's for discussion, so.
Of course, if you pay $5, you probably won't drink more than one beer.
Yeah, but I don't, you know, I mean, the idea is not to get out there and get, you know, sauced, sit out there and have a good time, listen to some good music, you know.
Okay, there was some questions.
$5, work, you gotta drink a lot of beer for $3, next.
There was some questions about alcohol in the park.
In the park.
Remember, Mr. Holland came up, there was a question about that? So whatever we do, we need to let, make sure that the public understands. So whatever we do, we need to let, make sure that the public understands.
Yeah, just because you were at Rhythm and Ribs, yeah.
You were at the festival, and the drinking of the beer was fine.
For the festival, yeah.
But you just can't go in there the day after the festival and sit down and drink.
That's right.
So we need to make sure that we get that understood.
Yeah.
Let's do that.
Okay. And, you know, after the Outreach Marketing Group and the Spearman Agency review, they may come back and say, no, we don't want to do this, you know, so. But that's, again, just looking at ways. And the majority of that festival about, I would say, or that particular festival, I'd say about a third of it is funded through Outreach Marketing Group funds. The other two-thirds is through sponsorship and entry fees for the professional teams and the vendors and that kind of thing. So it's a, it's a pretty heavy budget. I mean, it's, you know, it takes a lot of money to produce that particular festival. The little Rock the Block events that happen downtown, the summer block parties, that, those aren't so much, but, but again, the bulk of the cost is entertainment. But we do have to provide extra services on the city side to be able to accommodate that. So, anyway, just a thought, so. More discussion to come.
You know, to Wes's point, he might not be upset to pay four dollars for the beer.
Oh, he's gonna be upset to pay.
Where the city would get a dollar and the vendor gets three dollars.
Everybody, you know, this is a festival, supposed to be a fun thing. Something the city is saying, hey, come enjoy our town, come enjoy downtown, go enjoy.
But I understand, the only, the only people that would be asked to purchase a wristband is if you're drinking alcohol.
Well, can we assess a fee to individual?
Vendors?
Drinks. He would pay four dollars for the beer, we get a dollar, and the vendor gets three. Now, because he doesn't drink five, he's better off by doing that versus the wristband.
I mean, I don't, I mean, I...
I mean, that would be, that would be a city attorney question.
You probably could do anything you wanted to do, but...
Yeah, four dollars. We're not at the Braves.
I'd picture pay eight.
I know, I was gonna say, I'm gonna make Turner Field.
You can now get two for the proxy rate.
I will say, we already do that, we already get a portion of alcohol sales back.
Okay.
But that goes to Outreach Marketing Group, yeah.
Right. Well, it can come to us and...
Well, in a way it does. Have we seen any financial data about like how, how well that month or week or whatever has done for the City of Tifton? Lois, I see you over there. Do we have any financial data to see if that month has been good for us as far as tax revenue generation?
I guess it's probably to our account funds.
Okay. I'd just like to see how, you know, that month has done now versus in the past, you know, when you have that kind of participation, and it's got bigger every year.
Oh, yeah.
And I only can see it continuing to be, to get larger.
Can we calculate the financial impact, the true financial impact?
Well, there is a way to take the, and I'd have to defer to Tyron to, there are some multipliers, just like you have those economic development multipliers, you say one job creates X amount of dollars, you know, because it turns over in the community so many times, there are tourism multipliers for the same, to kind of get those guestimates on what projections are.
I'd be curious to know what that impact would be, or is.
We probably just have to break it out.
Okay.
And then how much it costs, you know, icons.
Right.
You see, you know, like for security and the...
Preparation of the area before, and then cleanup after.
I can tell you that, that's their budget. I said, they should be able to tell you that, that's within their budget, I'm sure they budget each event.
Well, we need to do that.
But one thing we want to be clear about, we do not, and I guess it's okay to speak on behalf of Outreach Marketing Group, there's no intent to ever create an event that would require a charge to participate, you know. So just to go to Rhythm and Ribs, you're not gonna walk into the park and pay five dollars to get in the park. That's not, that's not, this was just a way to look at those people that do want to drink alcoholic beverages or adult beverages to pay a little bit extra for the privilege of doing so.
You know, let me ask you this, you know, when the teams are coming in on that, was that Friday night? Maybe we have a, if somebody, you know, somebody brings a cooler with them, you know, if you're a participant, we charge for a cooler charge or whatever. So if they're not buying beer, it's inside, they're bringing beer from the...
They can't bring coolers.
They can't bring coolers?
They cannot bring, no.
Oh, they brought coolers.
What the teams do, what the teams do is separate from what the participants do. Because the teams are under a separate umbrella than just the general public who come out to enjoy the festival. Those people cannot bring coolers in the park.
You're talking about the...
The, just the people, just the tourists, or the citizens who come to the park to enjoy the festival. Now, the teams do their own thing, many of them, you know, camp in the park, they cook, they, that kind of thing. But the general public who comes to participate, we have a no cooler regulation. So that they will spend money with our vendors, because our vendors, for the most part, a lot of them, you know, we had Forty-One in Maine was a big vendor this year, and they provided, and the, who was the other one, Jessica?
Locker Room.
Locker Room, thank you. So we prefer that they get any money, you know, so that's why we say, no, you can't bring your own stuff in, you know, come and enjoy your evening and spend your money with our vendors, so.
Yeah, I mean, that's...
Okay. Any other questions? Good, okay, we'll continue to talk about it and see what we want to do. The next item on our agenda is, going back to Larry, discussion for bids at the West Side and Chula Fire Stations. And then you can just go right on into the discussion of the nice letter from Tipton County.
We can do that. It's just only packets, we received bids, this is the second time we bid the West Side and Chula Fire Stations. First time, we were too high, second time, we were too high, or two hundred and twenty-three thousand approximately. I have talked with Jim Crow about the Chula Fire Station, and he agrees that they don't want to pay that kind of money to pave that fire station parking lot up there. And they have also, and I think I forwarded his amendment to you, they've also agreed to, that they will take that on as their project, since the fire departments are going to go their separate ways. They're now going to allow the county to come and repair the base, much like we did on the West Side Fire Station, for the Chula Fire Station. Estimated cost of that, it's about seventy-five thousand to pave the Chula Fire Station now. So that'll be, that'll be coming up in our division of assets. The, so staff recommendation on that is to reject the bids that came in for that. The item number nine is a letter from Tipton County. You all have seen the letter, where they have sent us a letter requesting reimbursement for costs incurred to repair some utility cuts on county records. We're still looking into that, we did, we do have a request for information out, we have received some information. We're not ready to make a recommendation to council at this time, as soon as we, but we do want you to know that. I think the cost on that was three hundred and, three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, I'm not sure. What's the count in there? There's four different figures out there that are bouncing around right now. Three hundred and twenty-four thousand was the bid with Scrubs. And then there's three other figures that are bouncing around. So I'm still trying to nail the exact number down. As soon as we have that, we'll get back to you, but good ones, you know, that we are working on it, and that we have received that letter from, payment from the county.
Any questions, comments regarding...
Oh, yes, Sloss also did with Elder Sloss, I've forgotten his name.
They did withhold it?
Yes.
Is that legal?
Sir?
Is that legal?
Not in our opinion, we're...
In our city attorney's opinion, that's not legal?
No, sir.
What action can we take?
We're gonna get into that discussion later tonight.
Okay.
Can you follow up with Latasha on that after our discussion?
Sure.
Because that's a pretty, that's a pretty bold statement. It would be no different than me keeping your money in my account because I didn't like the shirt Johnny was wearing. It's not their money to keep. So I would like for you to follow up with Latasha if you could, so that the public understands what's going on.
To be clear, they withheld the joint funding, they did pass the other city.
That's, that's fine.
I understand.
That's...
Just I want to make sure that everyone else is clear. It wasn't one hundred percent withholding, it was just the joint firing order.
Yes.
Joint firewall, joint Sloss ones.
And it might not be a bad idea to also discuss the past due payments.
We'll talk about that tonight.
Larry, I've got a question for you. You know, these road patches, on their county's workshop session in October fifth, twenty fifteen, they, and then I think they approved it in the later October meeting, they discussed the road patching project and said that they would be made by the county's specs, which is DOT standards. I mean, when we, when the county approached us back in, what, May of fifteen, or April of fifteen, whenever, did we ever come back to them and ask them, can we do something different? And, I mean, because the road itself is very old, and I'm sure probably doesn't have that much of asphalt top, and probably less than an inch, maybe an inch, I don't know, I mean, I'm not an engineer or anything, but you do see it kind of, has an alligator pattern, you know, where it's taken a beating over the years. Their DOT standards that that letter kind of talks about, I mean, it's kind of the expense, I mean, it would be, I mean, they got, gosh, this is existing concrete asphalt, it's got to be somewhere around six inches or eight inches, and all that jazz, I mean, it can't be cheap to do that, is that what they did with this three twenty-four?
When we, when we were approached by the county to make those repairs, we got with the county manager, and we were told that we had to make the repairs to their technical standards, which is the two inches of asphalt, eight inches of concrete, or, and this of G A B, ground aggregate base. It's basically a DOT standard to repair a DOT road.
Right, and I, I don't think those roads currently are made to...
The roads weren't built to DOT specifications, therefore was the patch to DOT.
Most, I wouldn't say most, some of the county roads are what they call a double or triple by doing the surface treatment, which is a layer of tar, put rocks on it, put another layer of tar on it, put rocks on, put another layer of tar on it, put rocks on it, and roll it out, and you wind up with about a three-quarter to one-inch surface. And they're very durable and reliable surfaces, they last a long time. The, depending upon the location for these particular cuts, would depend, would determine what type of surface treatment there is. It may be, it may be two inches of asphalt in some locations. It may be a double or triple surface treatment in some locations. Without going out there and looking at each individual location, a hundred and fifty-seven or so, I don't know, we wouldn't know particularly, and we have not done that. We have looked at some of them, the repairs that were made, were not made to DOT specs, as far as we could tell. But if you look at the bid document, which I did receive last Friday, and had an opportunity to look at it this afternoon, they had their bid with the DOT spec, and then there was an alternate bid that did not include any concrete. And so because it cost so much to go with a DOT repair, they elected to go with the alternate bid, which was the three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars.
They did not give us an al, I mean, did we get...
We were never given the opportunity to make those repairs to anything but the DOT spec.
All right, correct me if I'm wrong, Mayor, didn't you go out and look at some of these with the county folks, or whatever?
I did.
All right. What, what was said about, something was said about maybe going into some kind of joint, maybe CBDG grant, or something like that?
Yeah, the roads, the discussion that we had that day was that the roads were in such poor condition overall. And they weren't, there's no curb and gutter, they're, they're just in terrible condition. That the best use of funds would be to go into a joint community development block grant application for repaving, so that we could address infrastructure, we could address the condition of these roads, we could look at potential curb and gutter, possibly sidewalks, that's what needs to be done. And, you know, you can patch and patch and patch, in the winter, you're throwing away money to continue to patch, and these are neighborhoods, these are kids riding bikes, these are people taking their, you know, route to work and that kind of thing. So the roads are just in, they're in very poor condition.
Can, could, is that even a possibility? Could we, like the water department, it's a joint fund, is there a way to do a joint CBDG grant with the water? And maybe rewrap some of those lines that are causing all the problems to, and then redoing the road surfacing or something, I mean...
You could apply for the C D G grants for that, we've done it in Tifton, I recall doing a joint, I can't recall a joint grant that we've done since I've been here, since nineteen ninety-nine, but there are joint grants, so now we've done joint city-county contracts with DOT. It's no different than that, other than it's just C D G money, so.
But it does work nicely with the plan for redevelopment, you know, that we're talking about, which is a big plan, you know, that hasn't failed yet, we're still looking at that. But a big part of that redevelopment of some of these areas is, you know, street and infrastructure and sidewalks, and making these neighborhoods safe and attractive, and making the roads safe and attractive.
You know, I don't know the county's purchasing policy or anything like that, so maybe, you know, the county only has to make a recommendation to the commission, and then he just spends whatever money that he needs to do to get the job done. But if I'm not mistaken, they only approved three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars to do the job, and they spent three hundred and sixty-six thousand is the number, that I think?
That's the number in the letter, yes.
So that's forty-two thousand dollars difference. I don't know, I'm saying, they could, they could have that...
He may have the flexibility.
The flexibility to do that, but I mean, I would like to know if something like that were to happen, that you would give us the courtesy to say, hey, listen, we have, went over budget about forty thousand bucks, you know. We are elected to be for two reasons. One, to serve and protect, and second law, to make sure that we spend every dollar, whether it be a service fee or a tax dollar, we have to be good stewards of those dollars. And, you know, I would expect my county commissioner to do the same thing as I do for the City of Tifton, and follow the dollars. Make sure that those projects are getting done on time, and to the budget that is set that I voted on, not going over by forty-two thousand dollars. I mean, that's just my two cents, I'm sorry.
Well, that's a good two cents.
Yeah, need to make that statement after county commissioner.
Like I said, we're still looking into it, as soon as we can nail down some hard figures and facts to give your group.
Are you, are you gonna assess what it would have cost the city to make those same repairs?
We are, definitely.
And Johnny, I know a lot of these roads run into your district and everything. I'm sure your constituents aren't thrilled about some of this.
Thrill isn't the word.
Yeah.
We're talking about mad.
Yeah.
Well, let me do ask this question right here, because I wrote down a couple of those roads, and some of the cuts that they've repaired have been recut again. And we got, you know, how, what is our policy, and how long do we take to get something like that done? I mean, to get repaired, so to speak, I mean, is it we make the cut, and you got sixty days to get it repatched, or do we cut it and patch at the same time? What is that, do we know?
Typically, I'm getting the saves area, or the peace area, we're public, of course. Anytime you have a water leak, you're gonna saturate your groundwater.
Right.
You get it, we get as much of it out as we can, and then we backfill it with good material. And inevitably, you're gonna have sinking of those right across the street from here, that's a prime example. But then we have to go back in and dig them out, and it dries out, put some good material in there, and maybe properly repair it. I don't know how long it typically takes to do that, but we can have two weeks to fix them.
I suppose thirty days is plenty enough time to make patches.
Sure.
Okay, just curious.
More questions?
Okay, all right. Okay.
You're good?
Okay.
Anything, they're good, okay, thank you, Larry. Our next agenda item is changing the date for the July council meeting, Jessica Jones.
The next, the council meeting is July the fourth, so we're not here, and I don't think y'all are going to come on that day. So we're proposing to move that council meeting to July the eleventh. We typically keep it on Monday and just do it the following week. So you are okay with that, and put it on the June, and y'all can formally make that motion at the June meeting.
Okay.
As long as that can work for everybody.
Okay, very good. All right, that concludes our workshop for the evening. Uh, we do have a special cause meeting, so I'll conclude the workshop and call the special cause meeting to order. And here's Mr. Ricky Hobbie to talk about that E P D hazardous waste trust fund account.
As we discussed a while ago, this is to finalize the reimbursement of the hazardous waste fund for the years that we requested. And that's basically it. If you've got any other questions, we will correct it as far as getting it into the fund, and what is left over will be moved into closure fund. I don't see it taking this whole reimbursement to take care of the issues that we're having.
Okay. All right, so at this point, we'll need a motion to authorize the agreement, city manager to execute the agreement for the funding from E P D.
Can, would be possible to initially put it into that fund?
Sure.
And then you can withdraw out of that the amount that you need. We can do that.
Do you want to make a motion and specify that?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion based on what's the original question that says where to withdraw, and as it's written.
All right, hold on.
Can you come on out with that fund?
Can we just budget that separately and keep up with it that way instead of setting up another fund, please?
Well, we'll set up another fund, I'm going to have you put it into the fund you said you were going to put it into.
Into closure, post-closure account?